Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich Committee of the whole meeting on January 24th, 2022. Before we start, I will remind council that this portion of the meeting is being recorded and live streamed to YouTube. I will now do a roll call of council for the benefit of public watching this meeting. My councillor Redicop and present in chairing this meeting, Mayor Shontz.
Present.
Councillor Martin.
Present.
Councillor Macmillan.
Present.
Councillor Merlehan.
I'm present.
Councillor Shontz.
Present.
Thank you very much. We need a resolution to reconvene an open session. Do I have a mover? Mayor Shontz and councillor Macmillan, all those in favor? That's fast. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Not seeing any items to come forward from closed session. There are none. Public meeting, none. Presentations, none. No, we have some delegations. We have one group of registered delegations for tonight's meeting. Before we begin, I will read some instructions for the delegations. Number one, please leave your videos turned off and your microphones muted until you are called on to speak. Secondly, your group of three has been allotted 15 minutes to speak. A timer will be shown on the screen and ding at one minute remaining when your time is up. Three, once you are finished, please turn your microphone and camera off again. You may leave after your delegation or stay on in the meeting as long as you keep your camera and microphone turned off. This is for the delegation for the Bresla Memorial Park Splashpad. We'll begin this evening by hearing from the delegations first, and then the council will hear an overview of it from a staff report. So the delegation is three persons, David Giacomoazzi, Lee Macmillan, and Jeff Barnard. Will be are here representing the Bresla Fundraising Committee. Gentlemen, you may turn your videos and microphone on now and begin when you are ready. Welcome.
Excellent. Good evening, and thank you for making time for us to speak tonight at the committee of the whole meeting. Our goal tonight is to introduce ourselves and provide a refresher on the Bresla Splashpad project in the hope to reapprove the resolution. I will keep the discussion at a high level during the presentation, so please feel free to interrupt me if you if you would like me to spend any more time on any particular topic. I'm going to share my screen. Just let me know if you can see my screen, please.
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, we we have a newly formed committee here in Bresla known as the Bresla Community Fundraising Group, which is made up of volunteers from our community, the Bresla Alliance Club, and the Bresla Recreation Association. Our group is committed to ensure the success of our fundraising projects and to provide complete transparency along every step of the way for our stakeholders. Now that we have introduced ourselves, I would like to now spend some time reviewing the history of the Bresla Splashpad project. The Bresla Splashpad project was accepted by the Township of Woolwich in 2012, and the 400-meter-square splash pad design was was completed and selected in 2013. The project was put on hold in 2015 to 2016 due to the potential sale of the land to the Catholic school, during which time the Township Council passed the resolution for the Splashpad project. The official resolution for the Bresla Splashpad was received from the township in 2017, and the splash pad was reduced in size to adhere to the resolution. The Memorial Park Plan was completed in 2018, which included the Splashpad location. Funding efforts were also kicked off in 2018, but met less than optical results from local corporations due to higher community needs. In 2019, as a result of the less than optimal fundraising efforts, the splash pad design was reduced further to 153 meters squared to reduce water consumption and costs. In 2021, the Bresla Funding Committee was formed, during which time we have created our fundraising strategy and produced all of our fundraising document documentation to kick off our fundraising campaign. We have also met with met and been in contact with the Township of Woolwich Recreation and Community Services Department to determine next steps. Thank you so much. I'm now going to hand it over to Lee Macmillan, who will spend some time reviewing some of the more details in the Bresla Splashpad project.
Thank you, David. So I'd like to go over the current project. So I'll be sharing with you information on our current project designs, where we are at with our fundraising and our current estimates for the project. Next slide, please. So the Bresla Grand Splash, our current project concept. So currently, our highlights of our of our current project is we have a revised splash bag concept of approximately 153 meters squared, so 1,650 square feet, featuring over 15 water place features, which meets the annual operational costs and requirements set forth by the township. The proposed location of the Splashpad is Bresla Memorial Park, and the Splashpad meets all the OADA assessable standards and will be a direct-to-drain system versus the recirculation, recirculating. Next slide, please. So current fundraising position. So this is something our group is passionate about. We're really looking to get out there and get going. So currently, the community grant awarded the project in the amount of 25,000. We're currently also holding 21,000 in cash by the Woolwich Recreational Foundation. So approximately 16.5% has been raised for a project of $275,000. So our plan for fundraising, so we're looking at the grants, trillium, local foundations, corporate donations, private donations, community-based events, and also asking for pledge support as a commitment to monetary support the project once the project goal is achieved. Next slide, please, David. So the voice of the community, this is something we've been hearing from the community. They're looking for things for their children, splash pad. So currently, we have no swimming pools or splash pads available in Bresla within, and also it's not in a reasonable distance. So with the fast-growing community that we have, we've been hearing on our Facebook page, people are wondering where the project's at. Also wondering just when when we're going to get some things into our parks. And also, there's a CTV report also that came out regarding the Bresla Splashpad. Next slide, please. So here we it's showing our current design. So this design is 1,647 square feet, which is a reduced design from our original design that was 4,050 square feet. So we brought the size considerably down so that we can keep costs manageable. Next slide, please, David. So here we have our estimates. So we have high-level estimates of all of the project. So our open space, like our water features, insulation, the construction materials. So we're at 198,000. Geotech study was came in at 6,000. Water supply, 13,560. Our electrical line and connection, 9,000. Site plan, 15,000. And then final site grading and sod, 2,700. So that brings us to a total of 244,000 with H and D, HST included. But we also have added in our contingency plan of 14%, as we all know. It's a good thing to have with any project you're doing, which gives us another 30,000, and that brings us to our goal of 275,000. And that's with the HSC, HST included. Next slide, please, David. So what we're here to do, we're asked, we're here to ask, or asked to the council is, we're looking for your support, and we're looking for your partnership. So as a newly formed committee here in Bresla, we are just looking for your support and partnership, as I mentioned, to help make our first project a success. And we're asking council to reapprove the resolution approved during the November 29th, 2016 council meeting. Next slide, I think that's just to wrap it up, and I just want to say again, thank you so much for having us here today to speak for our project.
That's everything.
That's everything. Well, thank you very much, David, Jeff, and Lee for your presentation. Is there any questions from council to the delegation? Seeing none, we'll now hear from Blake Miller, Project Supervisor for Recreation and Community Services, who will provide council with an overview of the report. Welcome, Blake.
Larry had a question.
Oh, sorry, Larry. I missed you. Sorry.
That's okay. Sorry, I was having a computer problem, so I actually ended up switching computers. So the question I do have, or a couple of questions I do have is recycling versus just draining the water away. Can you give us some information on that and what the difference in costs are if we would go to recycling instead of just draining?
Yeah, Jeff, are you good to take that question?
Yep. Thanks, everyone, for having us at the meeting tonight. So Larry, with regards to the recirculation versus direct-to-drain, we certainly there is be like a tank full of water, and it would continuously recycle through the splash pad with having some type of chlorination and filtration system on it, and the water would slowly top up in the tank as needed to make sure there's always sufficient water for the Splashpad. Direct-to-drain is simply that. Once it goes through the water feature onto the pad, it goes into the drain and out into storm stormwater and discharge that way. We did originally look at having a recycling system back in prior to 2016. And at that time, staff members had looked at the costs associated with doing directoring to a recirculating system. And the rules also have changed within Ontario with regards to the qualifications and inspections and monitoring of such a system since we originally had done that. And the results were you'd basically need a full-time qualified, if I say like a pool technician, to constantly monitor the water quality at the Splashpad. So it would mean, I think, two or three trips per day. That's someone would have to come out to Bresla to monitor that. And at the same time, they're looking at the Almira Splashpad and the amount of time that people would need to, you know, maintain both of them. And I think the result was that the cost associated with having basically a full-time staff member to monitor both of them was not was more expensive than just having a direct-to-drain system. So in the 2016 resolution, that was part of the change that we would change our system from a recirculating system to a direct-drain system.
Okay, thank you. I guess my my biggest concern is draining off two to three million gallons of water down down the drain every year, and especially when we're in a climate action situation or greening situation, however, whatever you want to label it. And also, we're typically at that time of the year, we're in a water advisory that we we can't be using excess water. So I guess that's one of my concerns. The other question I, yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The other question I have is, I think back in the 2016 report, it said that you had $45,000 back then. Just wondering what what the situation is there, whether that report is inaccurate, or or what happened to that 46,000, or was that just pledges?
So that 46 would be sort of a combined total of the grant and cash in hand would be the total sort of funds we had on hand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
There's no other questions? Oh, councillor Martin?
Thank you. Through you to the delegation. You said you're currently holding 21,000 in cash by Woolwich Recreational Foundation. Do you have those funds? Are they committed to you, or are you hoping to get them?
So the funds are being held in trust for this specific project by the foundation. So they are available to us for the Splashpad project.
Interesting. Any other questions for the delegation? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Blake Miller, our Project Supervisor for Recreation and Community Services. He'll provide staff report. Welcome, Blake.
Thank you. Good evening, council. As per report, R01-2022 staffer seeking council support. The recommendations in conjunction with the Bresla Community Fundraising Group's presentation. These recommendations are reconfirming support of the Splashpad project in the Bresla Memorial Park. The second being to reconfirm the Bresla Community Fundraising Group is to pay 100% of all capital costs with the installation. And the third recommendation is to direct staff to report back when further infrastructure analysis has been completed by both the township and fundraising group. The proposed Splashpad was initiated back in 2012, and since then has been endorsed by two previous council. Due to the length of time since the last endorsement, staff felt it was appropriate for the fundraising group to once again seek council support. The first two recommendations have been mirrored from previous reports, whereas the third recommendation is new. With the Bresla Community Center, with the Bresla Community Fundraising Group providing a summary of the project's history, I'll provide further information regarding the third recommendation. Staff in the fundraising group will need to assess the existing park and facility infrastructure to ensure that the water, storm, and electrical can be accommodated based on the design proposed. Staff will confirm that existing infrastructure is sufficient, and the fundraising group will be responsible for a site plan incorporating these utility connections. Once this information has been collected, staff will report back to confirm the design can be accommodated. Lastly, staff would like to bring to council's attention the operational maintenance costs associated with the proposed project. Staff anticipate these costs to be approximately $40,000 a year. Of that 40,000, $27,000 would go towards the water and sewer charges and up to $13,000 in staff staff time, which includes repairs and maintenance. With that, I'm available to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for the report. Any questions, Mayor Shontz? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you to the folks from Bresla for for bringing this this back and for doing the presentation tonight. And for Mr. Miller, so so we've had a number of partnerships with community groups. And I think one thing that we've learned is is the importance of communication and sort of someone overseeing the whole project that that brings all the pieces together. I'm not sure if this is a question or just a reminder to when you bring bring the report back to ensure that that is is part of it. But if you'd like to comment on that, that would be all right, too.
Through you, Chair Redicop, to Mayor Sean. Yes, the township plans to be doing the full project implementation.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Councillor Shontz and then councillor Merlehan.
I guess I don't have any real questions, just some comments. And I alluded to it a little bit before, and maybe council can can way back in on this. I guess I have problems, and I voted against the Bresla or the the Almira Splashpad for two reasons. One is the ongoing costs, and that was $30,000 back then, and now it's up to $40,000 for this one. And I know that they've had to hold back and limit the amount of times that the Splashpad works and now runs in Almira because of the costs. So that was one reason why I voted against it. The second one was the fact that we're we're pouring all this water down the drain, good water, at a time when we have a watering ban on, and and we're concerned about climate, and we're concerned about greening and all of that. So I guess I'm I would like to hear from council how how we can justify that. And that's that's a concern I have. So those are, that's my.
Councillor Merlehan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through you, Chair Redicop, to Mr. Miller. Can you can you speak to some of those concerns that councillor Shontz has with the water? And I'm thinking, I know at one point, we did talk about a possibility of a holding tank or something from the the water that maybe could be used to a watering system within the Bresla Park there. Is that something that staff has looked at? I know we talked about it quite a few years ago, as this project is now under a decade already. It's kind of incredible it's lasted that long. But could you speak to that, please?
Through you, Chair Redicop, to councillor Merlehan. I'll defer this question to Thomas Randerhoff.
To Chair Redicop, to councillor Merlehan, really what it comes down to for the for a recirculating system versus a direct-to-drain is the cost for staffing requirements and and chemical use as well, too. We would need to treat a splash pad the same way that we treat the pool at the Bullish Memorial Center, which would involve pool checks, chemical balance checks every two hours to be public health requirements. And that's not typically a role that we would assign to a part-time staff member or a seasonal staff member. They typically wouldn't come with those qualifications. So we would be looking at a full-time staff member to complete those responsibilities.
Yeah, sorry, Thomas. That's not what I was asking. I was asking with the water that, you know, we can still do a direct-to-drain, but maybe half measure in between where there's a holding tank, where the water would be captured and maybe recirculated for watering, you know, trees or or some other function. That was something that was discussed, I think, the previous council, it come up in one of the discussions. And I'd be interested to hear if that's even a possibility, just to repurpose that that water.
Yeah, through your chair, I got to counsel really apologies for that. Yeah, that's something we could explore, use of the gray water for for tree watering and that sort of thing. I I I'm fairly certain that there would be a great deal more water than what's required for staff in the summer for tree watering. That's typically what the only function that we could use it for. But yeah, that is something that we could explore.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for council for staff? Sorry. Councillor Macmillan, go ahead.
Sorry, Chair Redicop, not a question to staff, just a an answer for councillor Shontz. I I think that this is part of the struggle that we're going to be dealing with, moving from here going forward in Woolwich, that we're a growing community, and we're not that small town anymore, that, you know, we get into a certain size, and people expect services where they are. You know, I grew up in Heidelberg, and when I grew up in Heidelberg, there was 500 people, and you knew that you had to drive into into the city for everything except maybe a baseball game with some of your friends. But as Bresla is growing, people, you know, probably don't have the patience to drive into kitchen or drive into Almira to do these things. And and I think I certainly can empathize with the struggle that we're going to have with some of these big-ticket items that seem big ticket for us for sure. But I think that as Woolwich grows, as Bresla grows, as Almira grows, people are going to start expecting these types of services in their in their settlement area. So I think that it's certainly something that we need to to balance as a council. We're doing that with our budget now, but but certainly something we need to figure out a path for, because it's it's only going to continue getting worse here or better.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the comment, councillor Macmillan. Any other questions or comments for staff? Councillor Shontz and then councillor Merlehan?
Not really, not really for staff, just I've got some comments when one staff and the delegation have left.
Okay. Councillor Merlehan? Or no?
Yeah, thanks through you, Chair Redicop. Trying to decide if I answer councillor Sean's or maybe talk to the towards the group a little bit. Like I said, you know, we're looking at the dates and everything, and this is going on a decade. And I, you know, have monitored the, you know, Bresla different Facebook groups over the years. And there, you know, this comes up every so year, a couple of years. And and there seems to be a lot of anger directed toward council on on this. And I would kind of would would like that this group, it's a newly formed group, to take ownership of the project as, you know, what is what was expected of council or of the the previous attempts for fundraising and things like that. And, you know, with the same as the Almira project, it was a group that put together, they did all the fundraising, all that kind of stuff, and then they came to council when they had the project in hand and ready to go. And that will be the expectation that any communication as to where fundraising is goes is directed towards your group and 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 only come to the back to the township when you've got the the full amount of the money. Because, you know, there's been a lot of unfair statements regarding this project about, you know, why things are held up and all that. At the end of the day, if you can't raise the money, this project will not go ahead. So as long as that's crystal clear with this group and with the Bresla community, I I'd have a hard time not supporting this Bresla Splashpad, because I did support the Almira one, and back in 2016 or earlier, whenever it came to council, the several times. You know, there was this expectation that, yes, we were doing the fundraising, the money was going to come right away, and we were going to start, you know, building the project within the year kind of thing. None of that ever materialized, and and neither did the money. And and information as to, you know, what was going on was was not being given to the township or to the community. So it left a lot of questions there for for people to wonder what was going on. So I hope that's something that this newly formed group is is well aware of and is is can communicate that to the Bresla community for any support to to go on. Now, I just do have a question for Mr. Miller, so through you, Chair Redicop, to to Mr. Miller. The I'm just curious as to the amount of water, the 27,000 for water use. This is a significantly smaller Splashpad than the one in Almira. And Almira has around the same budgeted water allotment. Can you speak to, you know, why staff is is using this number with this much smaller Splashpad?
Through you, Chair Redicop, to councillor Merlehan. This quantity of water is based off of a formula we've received through open space. And based off of this formula, we've calculated the water consumption to be that. So it is a little conservative. It is difficult to tell, because your operation period can change depending on the weather. If there's any operational issues where there may be some problems with the with the pad itself, with the Splashpad itself. But that's kind of where we came up with the with the $27,000.
Okay, and is that, and I should know this because we just went through budget, and but is that water number the same as the Almira Splashpad for how much water we use that was in the budget?
Through you, Chair Redicop, to councillor Merlehan. I haven't cross-referenced to the Almira Splashpad, so I couldn't comment on that.
Jump in through you, Chair Redicop, to councillor Merlehan. Looking at numbers for the Bullunder Park Splashpad. Looking at numbers for the Bullunder Park splash pad, it does vary quite a bit. In the in the first few years, we had much more usage than we have recently due to the pandemic as well, too. However, numbers did range from, over the last four years, we have ranged from. A 21 to $51,000 annually for that splash pad. $51,000 was our highest year in 2018 and we actually reprogrammed the year following. The splash pad so that the bucket doesn't dump as much, that sort of thing. And we have seen savings. I anticipate we are going to fall in the range annually at Bullunder 25 to 27,000 dollars once we exit the pandemic. And that's water alone.
Okay, and. Just my final question, as far as operating hours and things like that, would would the Bresla and the Almira would would traffic? Sorry, staff, treat those kind of the same type of operational hours?
Through you Chair of the Council Merlehan, yeah, we would treat it the same. We would be open from June until Labor Day weekend in same hours. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we do have a recommendation through Mr. Miller's report. Does anyone want to move that? Counselor McMillan, seconded by Mayor Shans. Any more discussion? As Mr. Miller talked about, there's a third. Part of it that that will come back to us again. So Counselor Merlehan, go ahead.
I'm wondering if. If if we could revisit this again, if 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 the funds aren't raised and the project's not done within another year. There is a new council that would happen in 2023, I guess. Can this, if the if if the the funds aren't and the project's not moving ahead by the end of the year, can can we put a time limit on this resolution so that? It would come back. For another discussion. And I'm only saying that in this particular case because. Because of the lengthy. Process here, starting in 2012 to get to here. With not very many funds raised at the at the moment for for this project.
Counselor McMillan, do you? Would you want to put a timeframe on the recommendation?
I I'm comfortable with the motion as it's written, just because. I think that. We we sign up for lots of projects that have long time horizons and I I don't feel like this. Amount of money is saddling a future council with an unreasonable. Demand. That being said, a motion to to. Amend the motion is superseded. So Council Merlehan doesn't need my permission to. To table a motion to amend. So I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider a friendly amendment because I think that. We're fine to make this decision as a council and let staff in the future council work with it going forward.
Counselor Merlehan, do you have a comment?
No, I'll 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 comment with my vote. How about that?
Okay, okay, go ahead. Okay, so Counselor Shans? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I I I agree. I think we've set a precedence here because of the Almira splash pad, so. I I'm going to support it, but I guess my my question to council is. How can we justify putting $100,000 into greening? And then we start doing this kind of thing where we start dumping this water. Down the drain and it just goes against everything that we're that we're trying to accommodate or accomplish. And I I would like some answers. I think it deserves some answers.
Counselor McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Redicop, through you. I I think it's. A reasonable concern, but I I do think they're different issues. I I think that. Climate change. Is about the amount of carbon in the atmosphere and. And certainly, one of the impacts of climate change is water redistribution. So we end up in droughts in certain areas, floods in other areas. And how we mitigate climate change impact certainly is going to be a challenge. I don't know that a splash pad necessarily impacts that and and I also don't think that. Climate change, the the actual changing of the climate. Is impacted by taking water out of the ground and putting it back into, you know, streams and rivers through the through the water treatment process. So I I think that we can. Can have a consistent stance with regards to climate change and and a large part of the greening levy is just adding more trees. Increasing the tree canopy to 30% over, you know, certain number of years. So I I I certainly understand. The the question, but I I do think they're two isolated issues.
Thank you, Counselor Merlehan and then Counselor Martin.
I yeah, through you, just to respond to Counselor Shans's inquiry. Everything that Counselor McMillan just said, plus. This council has declared a climate emergency. We were one of the first councils to do that in Waterloo region. This council also endorsed the climate Waterloo region plan that calls for reducing our carbon. So that got support. We've also endorsed the 50 by 30 plan. We've also, we're one of the first councils to call on the Ontario government to phase out fossil fuels and and. Generating gas powered generations. You know, this council has done a lot on greening and. Part of the. Part of the thing is, you know, when you when you make endorsements and positions on the environment, you need to to match it with. Corresponding action and that action costs money. And it's, you know, we we've got 100,000, we started a greening levy to go towards these projects. So that is the reason why we do this. As a council, we made those decisions. To support climate action and, you know, I believe, you know, yourself and and I think most of the council. Voted in favor of climate emergency and to me. I I would be acting. Faster when when we call it an emergency than than what we're doing, but we're doing what we can. And 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 so that's the reason why. That and I do see this as different than than the splash pad, just for all the Counselor McMillan reasons.
Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just caution everybody not to make comparisons between. The splash pad and Bresla and the one in Almira. There was very little fundraising done in Almira and in fact, if I'm correct, there's one business that paid. Pretty well all of it. And it's not even located in our township. I'd be willing to let the people in Bresla. Have a chance to see how they. Do in fundraising. I would also say it's no point getting on social media and be mad at everybody. Because if they would have supported it in the past. We'd have significant funds. So I'd be willing to give them the opportunity, but. You know, don't come back in five years and say, well, let's do something else, could still have to achieve what we want. I mean, if the people are bored, we should have no problem raising the funds.
Counselor Shans, and then we'll move to the recommendation.
Thank you. I guess it's it's good to be able to pat ourselves on the back for what we're doing. But I guess that didn't answer my question is how we can do that and in and the. Opposite side, start pouring water down the drain, which goes against all of the actions that we're taking. So. That's my point. It's not the point that we're spending the $100,000. The point is. We're spending it at one side and then we're just pouring it down the drain on the other side. If you go on the internet. Part of greening and part of climate change is water conserv- conservation. And we're not conserving water. And the second point is, we're doing it. At the time when we need the water in in the region. And we have a watering ban on and and here we are, people can't water their lawns, but yet we can pour this water down the drain. So. I'm just making the point that. I think I think we have to look at what we're doing. I'm not going to go against the emotion. But I just want to make some points that it's funny that we want to do it one way and we take it away in the other.
Okay, thanks a lot for the. Mayor Shans, go ahead.
Thank you, and. I I'm going to support the motion too for the reasons that have all been articulated. But I do note that number three is to direct staff to bring a second report with. Further infrastructure analysis and overall related costing. And so. I'm wondering if when staff do that infrastructure analysis, if. They could do a little bit of, give a little bit of thought to. And and I'm not sure what it would be or where it would come from, but is if there is anything else that can be done in terms of. Better use of water, I I. Don't disagree with Counselor Shans. It bothered me in the Almira one too about about. Pouring money down the drain and I, you know, I don't know if if there's another solution that we could look at. But if 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 there could be just at least some kind of investigation when you bring that second report and also. I I guess I'm a little bit confused with with that piece of the motion. The the overall related costing, I I I guess the point is to make sure that it it's similar to to what we're expecting. And so if the overall costing would come back. Considerably different from our expectations that. We would need to have more discussion with the with the community group on that. Is that sort of? What what people are understanding from from that piece of the motion?
Thomas, did you have a comment?
Yeah, through your chair, kind of Redicop to Counselor Shans. On the first piece, I think we can, staff can can reach out to other communities. We have got a network that we can reach out to and see who is doing direct to drain. We do know that the majority are doing direct to drain. We can look at recirculating. We can also look at reuse of gray water as well, too, see if it makes sense. Staff wanted to include that third that third recommendation for council because we want to ensure. That the infrastructure that we have in place is sufficient and 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 the site plan is probably the first step. And so we're hoping to get to confirm, you know, adequate size for storm water, electrical from the building, that sort of thing. And then work with the fundraising group to to get a site planned on as well, too, right off the hop. And then we can, we can come back to council and just confirm that all the docs are in our before we before the the group. Jumps in for fundraising. And then your second question with regards to, I believe, the capital expenses. Yeah, we just wanted to to reconfirm with council that 100% of the capital costs are to be incurred by the the fundraising group.
Mayor Shans, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So. Just to the to the group then to to understand that 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 report will come back to us and. Will have further discussion at at that point. I certainly support it in principle and unless something really outrageous comes to light, I, you know. I I think you can go ahead, but I just want to have that caution. In case something would would come up that, you know, I I don't know, we we can't get electricity to it. That's silly, but. Something like that, right?
Call for the question. All those in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you to the delegation once again and all the best in your fundraising.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight on. I am number eight on your agenda is unfinished business. We don't have any consent items. I don't think we have any consent items. Items for approval, none and correspondence. Does anyone have any? Comments on any of the correspondence that was there? Counselor Merlehan, then Counselor Martin, and Counselor Shans.
Yeah, thank you through you Chair Redicop. The Woolwich Community Services asked for a $60 permit fee waiver. From council for the coldest night of the year, which is happening in February. I put a motion forward to. Waive that fee out of the council budget.
And. Still have a seconder to that motion to waive the fee for Counsel, Mayor Shans, a seconder. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? We, thank you very much, passed unanimously. Anyone else want to talk about correspondence? Oh, sorry, Counselor Martin, sorry, and then Counselor Shans.
Okay, through you. I was going to ask the question. Why do we have that line in in fees and charges for? For permits and that because every time somebody comes, yeah, we we waive it, we waive it, we waive it. I did not vote, so I didn't support it. I just wondered if it's a worthwhile. If it's a worthwhile cost, 60 bucks. Everybody that's participating could put in a few dollars and pay for it. I just get tired of all these groups coming for everything and want everything waived and we always say yes. I mean, if we're going to do that, it might as well be out of fees and charges.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Counselor Shans, you had a comment about the correspondence?
I I just like.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to follow up on what Counselor Martin said and I thought a number of years ago, I thought we passed. Resolution that says that any. Community organization doing fundraises for the community didn't have to pay those fees, so maybe staff can. Respond to that. But I would like to, the 9.2.2 and the 9.2.3. I'd like to offer support to those two.
You know, and those and those are what? Sorry? The numbers?
Sorry, 9.2.2, the Waterloo region, the City of Waterloo resolution. I was wondering if that affects any of our businesses in town or or in any of the communities. And then the the township. The regional governance review report from the township of North Dumfries, if we could. Support both of those.
Clerk Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just thought it may help council to to know that. That request by the City of Waterloo was actually granted, so the province did extend their. Temporary permission for patio extensions till the end of 2023. So and I I believe it's a COVID-19 consideration that they they've allowed for that. So. I don't think it hurts to lend your support to that, but that has already happened in a sense.
Any more discussion on the other one that Larry, Counselor Shans raised about the township of North Dumfries Regional Governance. Review report, sorry. Counselor McMillan, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Maybe not. 9.2.3, but 9.2.2, the the patios and the liquor license. Clerk Smith said it never hurts to have a. An endorsement of that. Perhaps we could have the mayor write a letter to the our local MPP saying that we. Are appreciative of that effort, something like that on behalf of council. I think that, you know, expanding patios and expanding. And getting rid of red tape for local establishments is good. So I don't know how council feels or the mayor feels about that, but perhaps maybe just the mayor reaching out to our MPP.
Is that possible request from Counsel McMillan? Okay.
I can do that.
Anything else on the the regional governance review report? Do you have any comments? More, Counselor Shans?
The only thing I have a comment on is I think it's, it would be good to get that information so that we know where we're falling short. It was a report to basically let the the townships or or any government know where they're falling short and then then they hide the report. So. Makes sense to be able to bring it to public.
Could we ask the mayor to write a a letter to? Whoever put together the report?
I I think a resolution from council would be probably the best way to do that.
Okay. Larry, do you want to move a? A resolution that we asked for the regional governance review part to be released?
Well, yes.
Seconder? Counselor McMillan, any more discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Counselor McMillan? Oh, okay.
If everyone's going to vote in favor, I don't need to speak to it.
Okay. All those in favor, sorry? Thank you. Anything else? Items for information and public notices? Is this a notice of public meeting concerning, go, go ahead, Clerk Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a notice of a public meeting for February seventh. And then if council has pulled the request for waiver of the permit fee and the resolution from the township of North Dumfries. But if you want to move the, the rest of the consent agenda as one item, I'd do that.
Okay, okay, can I have a mover, Counselor McMillan? For the rest of the items? For approval? Counselor Shance, all those in favor? Thank you, that's passed. Okay, number ten on your docket, staff reports and memos. The Indigenous Land Acknowledgements. Deputy Clerk Lydia Samello. This evening provide council with an overview of the report. Lydia, go ahead.
Thank you, and through the chair, I just wanted to advise that this report before you is basically just outlining an acknowledgement. That is already being observed at every council and committee of the whole meeting. And we are taking this one step further to have the acknowledgement recognized at every meeting and board meeting of council. And also the recommendation is to amend our procedural bylaw to reflect this.
Any questions for Deputy Clerk? Counselor Merlehan, then Counselor Martin?
Yeah, through you, Chair Redicop to Ms. Samello. So when you say that about the committees, are you talking like Heritage Committee and BIAs and? Every other group that we have under the sun, the Recreation Association groups and things?
Correct, so any committee of council, advisory committees, et cetera. We are within the report, it does acknowledge that we will be providing some instruction to the chairs and, and some training. So we will start that probably next month. If, if approved, so yes, we are extending it to all advisory committees of council.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Martin, you have a comment, then Mayor Shance?
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna ask, what does it benefit us doing it? To start with?
So through the chair, the benefit is that we are acknowledging the local indigenous community. And we are making it a priority. We're also looking at other areas to commemorate and honor and recognize wearing, raising awareness of the indigenous people in our community.
Okay. The problem I've got, I can't even pronounce the three groups. So if I am supposed to read that, we're gonna have a lot of fun. I do recognize though that land acknowledgements have been around for many, many, many years, hundreds of years. And I, I brought them along just for. Chair Redicop's, for him, he will understand. And it comes from the scriptures, it's from Psalms twenty-four verse one. The earth belongs to God. Everything in all the world is his. He is the one who pushed the oceans back to let dry land appear. That's been around for years, that's a land acknowledgement. And I brought that for you, Fred.
Okay, well, thank you. Mayor Shance, you had a comment, I think?
Thank you, in the, in the last couple of weeks, I, I, when I, when I started using this land acknowledgement. I used the Atawandaron as opposed to the neutral, which many people refer to the neutral, the Atawandaron, I. Believe is the original name of, of the very first group of indigenous settlers that. Indigenous people who lived here. So I wonder if, if maybe. After Atawandaron, we could just put also known as nu- as a neutral. Just, just to make that, I, I, I prefer using the actual name rather than the English name.
So through the chair.
And then Counselor Shance?
I was, I was just gonna say, Atawandaron was an indigenous name given to that group by another indigenous group, and it means talks funny. I, yeah, I've really tried to find. The name that the neutrals called themselves, because the neutrals was the, the name that the settlers gave them. Because they tended to stay out of the, the struggle between the Anishinaugah and the Honegashone. But I don't know if the neutrals is, is worse than the Atawandaron. Perhaps we could consult with a local indigenous community and, and get direction from them about what they feel would be most suitable or best suitable there.
But that would work.
Deputy Clerk, go ahead.
So through the chair, yes, we can look into that and look into that wording and, and if required, we can make changes to that for sure.
Counselor Shance, you had a comment, and then Mayor Shance?
Thank you, Counselor McMillan, obviously my research was lacking.
Go ahead, Larry, sorry, Counselor Shance?
Yeah, I, I guess I understand what we're trying to, trying to accomplish here. I guess I just would. Want to guard against the fact that it just becomes mundane and it just keeps being mentioned and, and we, we don't realize what we're saying. I think at one point we were having, we were suggesting to have a visitor come before council. On a regular basis and give us some backstories and I'm wondering if that would actually bring more. More things to the front rather than always doing this. Because I, I guess if, if it keeps getting mentioned and mentioned exactly the same, sometimes I think you lose, lose the meaning.
I, I would recommend we ask Clarence Kachi G. He has the Kershaw Lodge in Wellesley Township. That he, he would be a good person to communicate what, what these land acknowledgements. Mean for the First Nations people. Anyway, Counselor, Mayor Shance, go ahead, and then Mayor, Counselor Martin?
Yeah, can I ask Deputy Clerk Samello to, to, to make some kind of connection and maybe have someone? Come in and speak to us about, specifically about land acknowledgements, but also about the importance and, and the significance for them?
Yes, absolutely, that's something we can look into. And just to, to let council know that, you know, the township of Woolwich continues to explore opportunities to. Engage with the local indigenous community and other ways to, you know, bring awareness to the cause and, and what have you, so.
Thank you. Counselor Martin, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I would be more than happy if we only, if we did, but we have done up till now and we'd only do it at council meeting.
Thank you for that comment. Counselor McMillan?
Thank you, Chair, Redicop, through you. I agree with Counselor Shance, we need to, we need to be cautious that the land acknowledgement doesn't just become performative. And we read a, a little memorized statement and, and we almost lose the meaning of it and it becomes. All that we do. I do think that, you know, this, a lot of this came out of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And I think before reconciliation, there's truth. And we have to acknowledge our truth before we can even begin to think about reconciliation. And the land acknowledgement, understanding that. We did not settle, our, our ancestors didn't settle barren, empty wasteland. People were here before us and, and that truth is an important piece of reconciliation and I think that. We haven't got to the point yet where we, we understand our truth, where I think this is not necessary anymore. So I, I agree, performative gestures don't help anybody. I, I agree with Counselor Shance. But I do think that this is important and I support doing this at, at all of the meetings and continuing to, to see where we can. Find truth and, and build towards reconciliation.
Counselor McMillan, would you move the recommendation?
Has it been moved?
No.
No? Yeah, I would move it.
Seconder? Mayor Shance, any other comments on this recommendation? Counsel, Mayor Shance, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. At the region, often the, the land acknowledgement is read and whoever is chairing will just make a, a personal comment about. Their, what, what they've learned. Or, or, or something about their understanding of it. I don't know if that makes it more personal and then maybe less rote, but that, that's what the region's doing.
Counselor McMillan, go ahead.
I just want to answer Mayor Shance's question. I, I do, I think that it does make it more personal. I know I read the land acknowledgement as chair of the school board and I, it was something that was written out for me. And the names of the groups were actually written out phonetically, like it was, it was really just. You know, checking that box, but I think that you do a really good job, Mayor Shance, of adding that personal touch and. Hearing you deliver them, I do think that it is much better than what I was doing previously. So I, I do think that it adds something personal to it and makes it a lot better.
Hey, thank you. We have a mover and a seconder, all those in favor of the motion? Or against? That's passed, thank you very much. We go to ten point two, our draft two thousand and twenty-two water and wastewater budgets. We have Director Financial Service, Richard Petrick, to provide council with an overview of his report. Welcome, Richard.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is one of the last components of our two thousand and twenty-two budget program. This is our water and wastewater budgets, so just as a recap, as the report indicates, last year in two thousand and twenty-one, we had a zero percent increase in both our water and our wastewater budgets. And that was really a, a good direct impact because the region also had a zero percent change in their bulk rates. So for two thousand and twenty-two, the region has already passed the two point nine percent increase for both their water and their wastewater budgets. And as the report indicates, about three quarters of each of the expenditure budgets, both for the water and the wastewater, is made up of regional charges. So that's really one of the things that's, that's driving this budget. The other thing I would want to mention that has a major impact on our water and wastewater budgets is staff is proposing two positions in two thousand and twenty-two. One is an additional water and wastewater operator and the other one is a compliance administrative assistant. And those would be shared between both the water and the wastewater budgets. So with that, what we're looking at in two thousand and twenty-two for the water side is a three point six two percent increase. And that translates in from a per cubic meter charge of a dollar seventy-six to a dollar eighty-two. And then with that, the impact of that creates about twelve dollars and twenty-four cents per year impact to the average residential customer. On the wastewater side, we're looking at a two point nine nine percent increase and that is going from two dollars and ninety-one cents to three dollars per cubic meter. And the impact of that is eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents per year on the average residential customer. So with that, Mr. Chairman, staff is also in attendance that can help answer questions that council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Petrick? Counselor Merlehan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Chair Redicop, to Mr. Petrick. You know, in our property taxes, we talk about average assessment and, you know, it's. I forget what it is, four hundred or five hundred thousand or something like that, somewhere in between. What is the average user use when it comes to water and wastewater?
Yeah, so you, Mr. Chairman, so as the, the report indicates, it is two hundred and four cubic meters per year is the average residential. And that works out about seventeen cubic meters per month.
Okay, I, I asked that because I had a, a resident concerned about their water bill and they. It was, it was like two thousand dollars or something and I said, well, what's your normal rate? And he goes, oh, it was like over five hundred and it was like three people in the family. And I have more than that and my average rate is two hundred dollars, so I guess. You know, my teenage boys don't take as long as showers as, as, as what that gentleman was, so he was surprised when I told him mine was quite a bit. Quite a bit less than that, so anyway, okay, thanks for that question or answer.
Any other questions? Mr. Petrick? Counselor Shance, go ahead.
Are we getting into the budget side or is this just the side of the report?
To, Mr. Chairman, we'll take any questions council may have.
Yeah.
Water and wastewater.
Okay, I just have a general comment and, and I guess I noticed that we're hiring two people and then a possible, another person for admin. And then when I go into the budget, I see that. That we still have all of these outside people coming in and, and doing work for us and that doesn't go down. And it seems to me that, that if we're hiring people, we should be able to take some of that. And, and do it, do the work ourselves and I don't have any specifics, but I can give you some examples, if you just bear with me for a second. So if we go into water mains, for instance, external contracts is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And I, I just was curious on, on something like that, what is, what's that all made up of? And I see the different line items there, but it seems to me that we're doing a lot of outside contract and we're hiring two more people. I would hope that we would absorb some of that internally, but yet it keeps going up, so that, that's my comment or question.
Yeah.
And that's, that's in a bunch, a bunch of the line items, but I, I just picked that one out for an example.
No, no worries. Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that is best answered by Mr. Pupay, so thank you for popping up on the screen on that.
Thank you, and through you, Chair Redicop, to Counselor Shance. What we are, just for clarity, we are asking for an additional water wastewater operator this year and a compliance and administrative assistant. Our challenge still remains under resourcing and the water system continues to expand. At, at fairly quick pace, given the growth that is before Woolwich and the growth that we've been experiencing. Where we haven't seen increase in staffing, so we, we still do need to and there still is an efficiency in. Contracted services to complete some of this work. I appreciate though that this year we are going to be looking at. Some areas that we can improve with our internal resourcing. And the addition of, of the roads operators that we've requested in previous budget meetings. Will help lessen some of the load that our water wastewater operators are under, certainly during the winter months. So it can help with certainly some of our maintenance and I think right now at this point, we are just trying to. Right-size the ship, so to speak, with, in the, in the Public Works Department. And then we need to take some time and adjust and then report back to council again in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Is this will give us a bit of a, a peek, I guess, into what we can start to accomplish by onboarding additional staff.
Counselor Shance, a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, and, and I did have that note as well that we are adding other staff and the roads crew and that should. Alleviate some of that issue as well with, with the water and wastewater helping out there. I, I guess, are these external contracts or is that the type of work that we can do in-house eventually? And is that what we're working towards? And because if we're talking two hundred thousand dollars in just that one section, it's, you know, that's fairly costly and. I, I think hiring people wouldn't be that costly, so that's a question I have, is that something that we could actually do in-house if we had the staff?
And again, through you, Chair Redicop, to Counselor Shance, some of those items, we can certainly work towards lessening as we go forward. But again, our, our systems are expanding too, so I think we do have to do a wait and see approach. Some of those items absolutely would remain to be external, externally contracted out. The bacteriological sampling, for example, will be something, you'll see that item continue to increase as our system increase. Those are obligations and requirements, obviously, under the Safe Drinking Water Act, and we do contract that service out to regional staff in this case. So we wouldn't see taking that on at any point. That is something that we still see value in, in utilizing. But potentially with some of the valve replacements, I think you're always going to see an external contract complement. For example, if we have water main breaks or repairs on regional roads, those see a, a lot more traffic than some of our local roads. So we have typically looked to try to do water main breaks or valve repairs or replacements on local roads when we have resourcing. Available and typically have contracted out some of the regional roads. So there will always be some form of external contracted services, but it's potential, there is the potential for us that to lessen as time goes on. So in, in, in a long-winded way of saying, yes, in some regard, there will be a, a look at that by management to determine where we are efficient and where we can look to. To try to take in some of that more in-house, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Petrick, did you have something to add? Mr. Petrick, did you add something to add?
I have no, I think I answered.
Okay, Councilor Merlehan?
Yeah, through you, Chair Redicop, to Mr. Petrick. I was wondering if you could give us an update on the, the meter read, the automated system that was installed in the last couple of years? Just not sure if it's been a full build out of that system. I think my house got done in the summer. So I'm, I'm just looking at that number, and I see that the actual number for meter reading has gone down significantly. So I'm hoping we're almost done.
Yeah, you must determine, we are getting closer. We're in Almira, so that's great. So we were, the plan was to actually do Almira last because, you know, it is a larger system as well as there are, I would say, some challenging situations in Almira just because of historical nature. So I can pleasantly say we will be done this year by all intents and purposes. We are well on track of doing that. Our next task is to, to, and you'll see that come forward sometime this year, is an agreement with One Earth Hydro that will allow us to, right now, they are allowing us to, to utilize their system, but it's actually being done through our contractor K T I. By having an agreement with One Earth Hydro, or soon to be the new hydro company, we will actually be able to do stuff on our own. So yes, so then, and that's what we're ultimately looking for, is to be able to do this on our own, so we can pull data at any time. And again, then we can start to get into those leak detection activities that we're hoping to get into.
Okay, that's great. One other question, and I guess it could be you or maybe Mr. Pupay. I was, I was wondering are there other technological efficiencies that we should be looking to in the future that will have, like, help our water system in, in any way? I just know, you know, there's quite a bit of reporting for compliance and all that kind of stuff. Are there, are there measures that, you know, that we could start looking at that, that will help cut down a, a lot of that kind of stuff or, or make work just more efficient or automated or something? Through Chair Redicop, to Councilor Merlehan, we are exploring some software that will add some efficiencies regarding chlorine residuals, pressure in our system. We have, it, it functions very well, but we have a lot of readers at a, a lot of locations throughout the township that are, that are on wheels. It's, it's analog. It, it works on a graph system. So we are looking into the costs for any software improvements that we can do on those systems and try to take out some of the potential for human error regarding chlorine residuals that we are mandated to do on a daily basis. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the wastewater? A water and wastewater budget that, there's a recommendation connected to the report. Do I have someone who'd move that report? Shont, Councilor Martin moved by and seconded by Mayor Shont. All those in favor? Thank you. Is that me? Okay, sorry. We'll go on to the Almira Drain Number One Improvements Tender Award, and we have Mr. Pupay, Director of Infrastructure Services, who would like to provide council with an overview of his report.
Thank you, Chair Redicop, and through you, the members of council. What we have before you this evening is a tender award for Almira Drain One. In Almira, obviously, we were looking to award the, the contract to Robinson Farm Drainage. What we do want to highlight, we appreciate that there was only one tender received or one bid received. Robinson Farm Drainage is well-known in the municipal drainage world, and we have no issue with recommending them to complete the work. We appreciate that it was over what the engineers reported estimated. However, per the Municipal Act, or the Drainage Act, sorry, the Municipal Drainage Act, it is within the, the criteria. We are not required to go out. It is staff, the staff's recommendation to proceed at the contract price of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents with H S T rebate. To proceed to complete that work, it is quite a large ditch improvement cleanout, long overdue, as many of our municipal drains are finding themselves. So we are making inroads, I guess, onto our, our maintenance schedule over the past number of years. And, and since it has switched to our department, it is more apt in our group, since we do handle more construction-type projects, drainage projects. So we're hoping to, to make enhancements going forward and be able to maintain a number of these drains better, I guess, than we, than we have in the past. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Pupay? Councilor Shont, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Through you to Mr. Pupay. I'd noticed that there were fourteen contractors that picked up, picked up the information, and only one tender came back. Were there any tenders that were rejected because they didn't come back properly, or did we only get one that came back?
Through Chairman Redicop, to Councilor Shont, this was the only bid we received.
Do you have a feeling for why that is? Was the job, do you think it was too big for other contractors or they were busy? Or it just seems odd that we would have that kind of interest and then only have one person come back? And then, then the fact that it went up almost thirty-two percent over what, what the estimate was is a little startling as well.
And through you, Chair Redicop, to Councilor Shont, I, any, it would be just speculative. I, I don't know why. It's not unusual, though, to have far more plant takers than bidders, because obviously there are associations involved and want to see what's happening in other jurisdictions. There are suppliers, of course, that pick up tenders. So I, I, I don't have a good answer for you, so I wouldn't even look to guess.
Mr. Petrick, you have a comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think one of the, the factors that may have contributed to it is since there is some work that's being done along the rail line, there is an additional insurance requirement. So typically for us, we would ask for about five million dollars. With the rail, you would need to have ten million dollars in insurance. So that may have deterred some of the contractors that normally would do this type of work. Again, I think to, to Mr. Pupay's point, it may be a little speculative, but that's what I think is, is probably what we ended up with.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Councilor McMillan, go ahead.
Hey, Chair, through you. Any of the groups, any of the fourteen groups that picked up the information and then didn't put in a bid? Would it, are, are they groups that we've worked with in the past? Would it be worth reaching out to them to ask if that's what it was? Or if this is, you know, part of a new reality with, with COVID and staffing? Or i- is it worth us trying to, to investigate that at all?
Uh, through Chair Redicop, to Councilor McMillan, I, I would suggest it would be staff's opinion that we stay with Robinson Farm Drainage. We have the ability, obviously, to, to, to deal with the only bidder. Again, we're very comfortable with who they are. They're a very efficient contractor. So we're confident with the, the contractor we're, we're selecting or asking council to select. It would be unusual at this stage in the game, I guess, to try to reach out. We could, we could ask, I guess, why maybe they haven't bid.
Councilor McMillan, follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, not so much for this project, but going forward, is this something that, you know, is something that we're going to have to deal with going forward, or is this a one-off that, you know, the next drain project, don't have to deal with again? That was more to reaching out to, if there are groups that we are comfortable with, that we've worked with in the past and just saying, what was it about this project that made you not put a bid in?
And through you, Chair Redicop, we can certainly, we can, we can certainly inquire on that moving forward, for sure.
Councilor Merlehan, go ahead. And then Councilor Shont?
Yeah, through you. I, I was just gonna move the recommendation.
Okay. Do I have a seconder? Recommendation? Councilor Martin, thank you. Councilor Shont, you have another comment?
Yeah, I wasn't questioning the fact that we, we would try and find a different supplier. I was just more curious why fourteen people would pick up and only one drop off. So it was just more of an inquiry, not, not suggesting that we should put it back out for tender.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you very much. That's passed. Carried, sorry. Other business? Council reports? Are there any other reports from council? Seeing none? Outstanding activity list as of Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? Seeing none? Notice of motion, none? That the meeting adjourns. Have a mover and a seconder? Councilor Shont, Councilor Martin, all those in favor? Thank you very much. That's passed. We carried. Now I'll hand over the chair to Mayor Shont for the scheduled special council meeting. Thank you very much for all your work this evening.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. We have a summary of recommendations from Committee of the Whole Meeting dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. That would be today, be approved as presented, and that would be the Almira Number One Improvement Tender Award that we just discussed. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Councilor Shont, seconded by Councilor Redicop. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. And then a motion that the following bylaws in the hands of the clerk be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed, and that they be numbered as bylaws number zero one dash two thousand and twenty-two to zero three dash two thousand and twenty-two, and that they be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with a corporate seal. And those would be a, a bylaw to, for the appointment of a licensing officer, and that would be Lydia Samallo. A bylaw to provide for the appointment of a deputy fire chief for the township of Woolwich, that would be Craig Eveson. And a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings of the council of January twenty-fourth, which is this council meeting right here. A mover and a seconder, please? Councilor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Redicop. All those in favor? And that is carried. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn to meet again a regular session on Monday, January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by Councilor Shont and seconded by Councilor Merlehan. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. And in closing again, council would like to thank everyone who participated or tuned into the meeting on our YouTube live stream. Council, once again, stay connected on Zoom until there is confirmation that the live stream has stopped. And good night, everyone. See you next Monday.